I call this pre-meeting briefing of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees to order at 6:00 PM on October 5, 2023. The purpose of this pre-meeting briefing is to conduct a briefing session with administrative staff regarding the posted agenda for the regular board meeting scheduled for 7:00 PM on October 5, 2023. For the record, board members present are Tara Herboczek, Sally Derrick, Carolyn Benavides, Iliana Garza-Rojas, Randy Shackman, and myself, Cassandra Hatfield. The next agenda item is Audience for Guests. Persons wishing to speak during Audience for Guests must have completed a form for this purpose and placed it in the designated location prior to the meeting. Ms. Canada, do you have any requests? Okay. So with no requests, we'll move on to item number three, Administrative Reports. Dr. Eldridge?
Yes, we have two reports today. And the first one, item 5C, is Consider Approval of the Financial Report. So Mr. Garrett?
Thank you, Dr. Eldridge. President Hatfield, so as you know, it's the end of the year and we met with the Audit Committee this evening with the Board's Audit Committee as well. So they kind of talked about the process and where they are and what's left and what's coming up and how we finish out the audit for the year. So as you know, this is the one month that there's no financial report because we're in the middle of doing all the adjusting entries and closing entries for the year for accruals and payroll and things like that. So what we did was gave you the financial report, I mean, the investment report so you can see where all of our funds are, how they're distributed, how we invest them different ways through the different funds that we have, whether it's general fund, Fed Funds, or the bond funds. So if you have any questions, I'll take it on the, I'll take them now.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Board members, do you have any questions about the financial reports? Okay. Dr. Eldridge?
Okay, the next item is item 5K, and it's Consider Approval of the Purchase of Ballistic Window Film. So Rachel?
We are not ready to make a motion on this, so I would like to remove this one from the agenda. The scope of the project has changed, and so we want some time and some opportunity to revisit with our construction team on the scope.
Thank you. Board members, do you have any questions about 5K? Okay. Thank you for the information update. Dr. Eldridge, any other reports? Okay. So with no other reports, we'll move to item number four. Board members, do you have any questions regarding the consent agenda items? Ms. Herboczek?
On item 5E, the Consider Approve the T-Test Appraisers, I just have a clarifying question. The description of the item is approving the comprehensive list of appraisers, but there's only two on the attachment. Are those in addition to those that we have previously approved?
Yes, that is correct. You approved the majority of them in August.
Okay.
And as we hire people, we add them throughout the year.
Okay, so it's the comprehensive additional, I guess, approvers?
Yes, the comprehensive list for this month.
Okay, thanks.
Any additional questions? Okay. So board members, we have reached the end of the agenda for the pre-meeting briefing, and we are adjourned at 6:03 PM.
I call this regular meeting of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees to order at 7:00 PM on October 5th, 2023. Board members, district staff members, and members of the audience, you are free to join me in standing as Ten Rubio from the nonprofit organization Make It Count provides a message, followed by the leading of the pledges by RL Turner High School student Kelly Ramirez, leading the pledge to the US flag, and Creekview High School student Eric Rodriguez, leading the pledge to the Texas flag.
All right. Hey, guys.
Hello.
If we could all bow our heads real quick. Heavenly Father, we thank you for nights like tonight. It's not lost on us, Lord, that we are free to gather, free to make plans and to pray and to just have joy and enjoy the wisdom that's shared amongst one another, God, because it's not like that everywhere in the world, but it's like that here. And so, thank you for bringing us together here to allow us to do that. And so, Lord, we pray for our plans that we make. We ask for wisdom, for concepts, ideas, Lord, that'll help push forward this city and this district. And God, your word says, "Man makes plans, but only you, God, order our steps." So, God, order our steps. And on behalf of every student, every parent, every family member, every teacher, administrator, and caring person in the community, God, we just ask, Lord, to bless this city, bless this school district and this community, and help us in this meeting, God, let it be fruitful, bless this meeting and everybody in attendance. And we ask this in your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. And now, from a moment of silence.
Well, good evening. The weather is so much nicer than it was this time last month. We're blessed to have you all here with us tonight. I want to thank Make It Count Mr. Rubio for coming and for our students for leading the pledges. And that is a new feature of the board meetings. We're excited to have students doing those now. So, thank you very much for coming and joining us tonight. As a district, we dedicate all of our efforts and resources to a goal of high expectations for all. The board uses this goal to guide all deliberations, decisions, and actions. You will get to see all deliberations, decisions, and actions of the board in open session, with the exception of some items, which may be discussed in closed session as stipulated in the Texas Government Code, Section 551, commonly known as the open meetings law. These items typically deal with personnel matters, consultation with our attorney, and real estate. For the record, board members present are Tara Herbacheck, Sally Derrick, Carolyn Benavides, Iliana Garza Rojas, Randy Shackman, and myself, Cassandra Hatfield. We constitute a quorum and may conduct business on behalf of the district. Before moving on to the next agenda item, I would like to remind you that the board will accept comments from the citizens of the district and from district employees. Persons who wish to speak during Audience for Guests must have completed a form for this purpose and placed it in the designated location prior to the opening of the meeting. When the board addresses the agenda item number three, Audience for Guests, you will be invited to the podium to speak. Next on our agenda is item number two, Special Resignations and Recognitions. Ms. Parnell?
Of the board, excuse me. And as you make your way down, tonight, we'd like to begin with our student recognitions. First up, we would like to congratulate the Blaylake Middle School Band for receiving the commended award for the Mark of Excellence National Wind Banner Band Honors Competition. The Mark of Excellence is a national competition that recognizes and awards outstanding achievement in performance by high school and middle school bands, choirs, and orchestras. The Blaylake Band was one of forty-five school bands in the country in its school-sized division to be recognized by the Mark of Excellence this year. The band is directed by Mr. Keith Marshall, and this is the second year for the band to receive this honor. So, tonight, we have the section leaders with us, as well as Mr. Marshall. We would like to ask you all to come forward for a group picture. Congratulations, students. New this year is the CFB Champion Award, and this is sponsored by CFB and the Chick-fil-A at Trinity Mills. The CFB Champion Award recognizes teachers, employees, students, and our community members for excellence in leadership, outstanding attitude, community involvement, personal development, exemplary character, and individual achievement. Tonight, we would like to introduce our first two recipients. And our first award for the CFB Champion Student goes to Mr. Mateo Rodriguez. We'd like to ask him to come forward, please. Mateo is a senior at the Metza Academy at RL Turner, and he was nominated by Principal Hunter, who said this about him. "Mateo exemplifies the quality of a dedicated student. He consistently steps up as a leader with the academy. He volunteers his time to guide campus visitors through various programs. When the academy experienced staffing challenges, Mateo volunteered his time in the lower-level engineering classes he took to support substitute teachers. He has gone the extra mile by preparing, implementing, and assisting with lesson plans during the practicum period. He also juggles many responsibilities to tackle NASA problems and meet requirements for dual-credit STEM entrepreneurial classes. We'd like to congratulate Mateo for his leadership and excellence in education." Our first CFB Champion Award for a staff member is presented to Mr. Jonathan Wilk. Mr. Wilk is a PE, Health, and Athletics Specialist. He is responsible for elementary, secondary PE, and health matters related to the function of athletics. He is also the lead athletic trainer for the district. He was nominated for this award by Coach Putter, who had this to say about him. "He always goes above and beyond the call of duty to help community organizations. He, along with the City of Carrollton, put on a citywide health fair at Standard Stadium, helps out with the Stop the Bleed and Heart CPR Month with the Fire Department. Coach Wilk is in charge of putting all of this together, as well as scheduling all classes for CPR certifications. Coach Wilk's qualities as a leader, organizer, and most of all, his heartfelt commitment for helping our students is what qualifies him as the CFB Staff Champion of the Month." Finally tonight, whoops. Sorry about that. Finally tonight, September fifteenth through October fifteenth is National Hispanic Awareness Month. We've had a variety of events throughout the district. We've had a variety of events throughout the district, from food tastings to celebrating traditional dress. One special event was the Creekview Hispanic Heritage Night Kickoff at Standard Stadium. We had a special performance by our folklorica group, as well as professional folklorica group, Mariachi Band and Group. We want to share a brief clip with you tonight that was created by the Creekview High School Yearbook Team that highlighted this event. So, we'll watch a portion of this. And we also encourage you to visit our website to see a list of all the remaining events taking place this month. Again, to see this video in its entirety and see the remaining events taking place, we encourage you to watch or look at our website. And again, congratulations to all the students and the staff. We appreciate you.
Thank you again. We're so blessed to have you all here tonight and celebrate with you. So, we really are excited about the great things happening in CFB. Next, we will move to Trustees Reports, Item 2B. Trustees, would anyone like to share celebrations or observations made over the last month? Ms. Benavides?
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to share that we've had so many wonderful Hispanic Heritage Month celebrations all over the district. The kids have done such a great job, parents bringing food, the smiling faces, and just embracing everything that they believe in and trust. It's wonderful to see their passions. They bloom, and we just love the ability to celebrate everyone in our district. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Garza Rojas?
To piggyback off of Ms. Benavides, I totally agree with you. Hispanic Heritage Celebration has been incredible. If you can go, please go and see all the efforts that our staff is putting into it, which is so incredible. It's so beautiful to see the teachers pour their hearts into these students, and then for you to see it with the kids. It's amazing.
So, I would like to share, this past weekend, we also had a board retreat. And during that, we got to go to Lavalita and serve in the cafeteria. And just to see the work and daily things that our cafeteria staff do to keep these cafeterias running clean, healthy, wonderful meals. I had a salad with chicken and Caesar dressing, and I thought I was in a restaurant. So, in addition, seeing the students' smiling faces in the cafeteria, it was just a really great experience to be able to be behind the scenes in our schools. And I look forward to the other exciting things that we'll do in the future. You might find us somewhere else in the district, maybe at the bus barn soon. All right, any other updates? Okay. So, next on the agenda is Item 2C, an update from the PTA. Ms. Castillo?
Good evening, Superintendent Eldridge, all of the board, and all of the administration. Thank you for having us here tonight. We would like to let you know that since the last month, during the last month, Council PTA, in conjunction with our Field Service Representative and campus principals, have conducted five PTA board elections. These elections were necessary to reestablish PTAs where the campuses were unable to hold elections the prior school year. We would especially like to thank two of our board members, Carolyn Benavides and Kim Brady, for coming out to support some of these elections. During the past month, our membership has increased by over eight hundred and fifty members. This gives our combined CFB/ISD/PTA membership total brings it to four thousand nine hundred and eighty, which is a great number. We hope to increase that over the next year, and you can help us do that by going to www.joinpta.org and signing up for your favorite PTA campus. This month, our highlight is with the Reflections Program. Many of our campuses, thirty-six campuses, have students participating in the Reflections Competition, which is a national competition supported by National PTA. We would like to remind them that any advancing entries are due to Council PTA by November seventeenth. More PTA information and important dates are available at our website, which can be found at cfpta.ch2v.com. Thanks so much for having us.
Thank you very much. We look forward to the... We're so thankful for all the support that PTA gives to us and can't wait to see all the wonderful Reflections entries that come in over the next month. Backing up one item is 2B, District Announcements. Dr. Eldridge?
I too appreciate our board retreat that we had last weekend. Just want to share that today was RL Turner's Homecoming Parade, and the students on the homecoming court taught me a new way to take a selfie. So, I didn't know that you could turn the camera the other way. So, it's amazing the technology that our students teach us. So, I just think that is a major district announcement today, because I didn't know. The other thing I want to remind everyone is Monday and Friday, or Friday and Monday, our students are off, and they should have gotten their fair tickets. So, please let us know if you didn't. I also want to share some pieces of mail that I received addressed to the superintendent, and they are amazing. So, I encourage you, if you would like me to write you back, you can send me a letter, because some of you don't know what that is. You send emails or text messages. So, I received a letter from a young student at Stark, and he said, "Dear Dr. E., just wondering if it's not, why it's not fair that we only get two days of not going to school, but five at school. Can you please make school with only four days and three weekend days? That way, it'll be fair for all of us." And so, I just think, wow, we are not going to go to four-day weeks, but I know that you kids need more rest. And then, the second one that I received was all cut out, and I just, it's amazing. "Dear Dr. E., how are you? Do you have a person that gets on the top of schools? If so, I need it, because my ball is stuck on the roof." And so, I would like to personally thank Bobby Shaw, who is in charge of our maintenance. He went and he got on the roof, and the reason he had to get this football, because it had the student's phone number on it. And so, he wanted to make sure he got it back. And while Mr. Shaw was up on the roof, he also found a soccer ball and a tennis ball. And so, if you all know how to write letters, I would encourage you, because I just find those so interesting. So, just want to thank Bobby Shaw and also Mr. Mario. He's our lead electrician, and he's worked in our district for eighteen years. And he told me his journey of starting out as an apprentice. And I think he wants, just to see how many great people have grown up and done amazing things and continue to work for the good of CFB is awesome. So, that's all I have to share.
Wonderful updates. I anticipate you'll be getting even more letters now, was from students sharing some fun things. At this time, we'll have a brief pause to allow anyone who would like to step out of the meeting to do so. I know we have some people that are hoping to get to a football game or various other things tonight. So, anyone wishing to remain for the rest of the meeting, you're welcome to stay, but we'll take a brief pause for anyone that would like to leave. At this time, we're going to take a brief five-minute recess. We'll come back at 7:26 PM.
...
All right. The time is now 7:30, and I call the meeting of the CFB ISD Board of Trustees back to order. And the next item on the agenda is number three, Audience for Guest. Persons who wish to speak during Audience for Guest must have completed a form for this purpose and placed it into the designated location prior to the opening of the meeting. Ms. Canada, do we have any additional forms? All right. Before we begin, I will remind our audience members of the board's procedures for handling Audience for Guest. Anyone interested to speak in person during Audience for Guest must have completed the form and listed the topic they wish to discuss prior to the start of the meeting. Each speaker will be allowed to speak once during Audience for Guest and will be allowed a maximum of three minutes to address the board dictated by Board Policy BED Local. Because the board wants to hear from as many of you as possible while also keeping the meeting running efficiently, groups of more than five people who want to present on a particular viewpoint on a topic should appoint one person to speak on behalf of their group. Please remember that the board cannot deliberate on any subject that is not included on the agenda for this meeting. Board members will listen to comments but will not respond or answer questions. We ask that you do not discuss students who are not your own child. The timer will be shown on the screen in front of you, and we will begin when you arrive at the podium to speak. Again, the speaker's presentation will be limited to three minutes. Our first speaker tonight is Mackie Gore.
Hi, my name is Mackie Gore. I'm a fourth grader at Janey Stark Elementary. I started going to that school in kindergarten. And at that time, our playground was already broken and old. Five years later, it's still the same. My mom told me last year we were getting a new one, finally. But turns out, we only got one slide. It takes forever to take a turn, and most things are still broken. When it rains, we can't go on the field, so we use the playground. And it's very crowded. Today, I am speaking on behalf of the students that can't because they can't attend at this meeting or they don't speak English. I'm also speaking for my first grade sister. Can you please help us get a new functional playground for all 700 students in my school? Thank you.
Thank you, Mackie, for coming to speak with us tonight. I appreciate the courage that it took as a student to come and speak. And the district administration will be reaching out to you about your comments, okay? All right, thank you, Mackie. And next, we have Lucy Gore.
Hi, my name is Lucy Gore, and I serve as the current PTA President at Janey Stark. Tonight, I'm representing the families that were affected by the transfer of one of our talented counselors, Ms. Lopez. In the beginning of the year, the school year, we suddenly found out she was no longer at her school. She had been transferred to a different school. We didn't find out, of course, until we asked administrator, administration. There was no clear reason why she was moved other than the other school needed a counselor. I know you all know, but I'll remind you here, the TEA's recommendation for counselor-student ratio is two hundred, one counselor per 250 students. We have over 700 at Janey Stark, so we were already short with two counselors. We're down to one. I know this is a problem. I've talked to a few of you about it. When I go to the website today, actually, to see if there's any open job postings for counselors, there's only one for Blaylock. There's not one for Janey Stark. I'm sure other students or their schools are also short, but I'm here talking about Stark. So I know in this forum, you cannot answer my questions, but I would love to know what the process is about fixing this problem and supporting the families, the students that need a counselor. I am, as I mentioned here, representing those families, those students that don't have a voice or can't be here or cannot email, don't know how, whatever the reason is. I want to make sure that as I promised to them as their PTA President to pass on the message and making sure that somebody, someone, whoever is being accountable and there's processes. I hope the communication improves as well via district, school administration, parents, because it sounds bad to say, but it looked fishy on why things happened the way they did, and it doesn't look good. So it's a problem, please help us fix it. Please help us give the students the social and mental health that you say that it's very important and top priority for them, for you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gore, for sharing your comments. The district representative will contact you about your comments. Next, we have Leighton Gamble.
Good evening, Dr. Hatfield, or sorry, Mrs. Hatfield, members of the board, and Dr. Eldridge. My name is Leighton Gamble, and I reside at 1505 Northridge Drive. Our poor black boys are confused. They don't know if they're their mama's boyfriend, their mama's friend, their mama's daddy. And our Hispanic kids are living in poverty. They have both parents working two jobs, so if someone comes along and offers them quick money, well, of course, they're going to take it. These were the words spoken by the leader of our district to her cabinet on April 25th. Each Sunday, I attend church instead under biblical teaching, teaching that tells me over and over again to speak against what is wrong and to love others as I would love myself. The words spoken by Dr. Eldridge go against everything that I believe. Even more so, they wrongly portray the community that she was hired to serve. I am taught that as a believer and a follower of Christ, I am called to be the salt and light, a city on a hill, and to do everything I can to push back the darkness that we live amongst. Week in and week out, I read a generosity prayer that I will give until there is no needy around me. Well, tonight, I am giving of my time and my voice for those that cannot stand up here to speak for themselves. I was recently reminded by a community leader that people like me, privileged white women, can no longer sit silently while my black and Hispanic brothers and sisters are being discriminated against. And that's exactly what these comments are, hurtful generalizations that are 100% discrimination against the majority of the families that make up our great district. As Ms. Hatfield stated in her response to my email last week, first and foremost, the district is committed to ensuring equal educational opportunities to all students in accordance with the law, to include the prohibition of discriminatory conduct by any employee. To this end, the district maintains and follows policies that provide the right of an individual to report allegations of such conduct so that they may be addressed and investigated. This has not been done. This misconduct was behaved by the leader of the district, i.e., everyone's boss. In this instance, an internal investigation is not sufficient. Likewise, an investigation by the board that hired her would not be appropriate. As a product of Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD, a parent and an active community member, I am personally calling for the Board of Trustees to choose an independent investigation performed by an unbiased third party. An independent investigation would give the anonymous author of the original letter and most likely others the opportunity to speak freely without fear of retribution and retaliation. Our poor black boys are confused. They don't know if they're their mama's boyfriend, their mama's friend, their mama's daddy. And our Hispanic kids are living in poverty. They have both parents working two jobs, so if someone comes along and offers them quick money, well, of course, they're going to take it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gamble, for your comments. As a district representative, we'll contact you to follow up. Additionally, I would like to make a statement on behalf of the Board of Trustees. First and foremost, the district is committed to ensuring equal opportunities to all students in accordance with law, to include the prohibition of discriminatory conduct by an employee. To this end, the district maintains and follows policies that provide the right to an individual to report allegations of such conduct so that they may be addressed and investigated. In July, the district was made aware of an anonymous complaint concerning alleged comments made by the superintendent. The allegations were by no means ignored by the Board of Trustees. In fact, despite the anonymous nature of the complaint, the allegations were addressed as soon as possible by the Board of Trustees at a properly-called meeting held on July 20th, 2023. In that meeting, this statement was made at the end. The Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District Board of Trustees reviewed and discussed the contents of an anonymous letter received. As a responsible and committed governing body, the Board of Trustees will address it in strict adherence to DIA Local and other appropriate district policies and procedures. The intent of this statement provides clarification to our community. It is critical of importance to the district that all parents and students feel supported and heard. Thank you. We will move on with Audience for Guest. Our next speaker is Mary Level.
Thank you. I'm here on behalf of the Carrollton Farmers Branch Association for the Gifted and Talented. We're a nonprofit organization. We're over 40 years old, and we're run exclusively by volunteers. Our purpose is to advocate and support the students, parents, and educators of our high-ability learners. We're reconstituting post-COVID, and we recently had an in-person event that was the largest event of its kind since my involvement with the organization over 14 years ago. Dr. Kim Lee is our Vice President of Programs, and she initiated an event to bring the Perro Museum of Science talent here to Carrollton Farmers Branch students and do that with a grant to CFBA GT from the Perro Museum, so it didn't cost AGT anything to bring this to our students. Over 500 parents, students, and friends attended. It clearly swamped the capacity of the ESDC, and we needed to pivot very quickly. And with the help of Stacy Carroll, of Advanced Academic Services, Principal at Creekview, Security, we were able to deploy Creekview's resources and make this available to our parents very quickly. It was just extraordinary. I want to thank Ms. Carroll. I want to thank our security officers. I want to thank the principal of Creekview High School. I want to thank our Rancho Culinary students who provided, we gave them an opportunity to cater for pay, and they came and they volunteered, and they talked with almost every student there and were great ambassadors on behalf of our district to the parents and students. CFB ISD has a strong reputation throughout this state, and some would say the country, for our service to our high-ability learners. And this was just another example of that and with the family that came together to make this event happen for so many parents who were just, and children, who were really hungry to connect and for knowledge about how to meet the needs of their high-ability students. So I just want to thank them all. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, for sharing your comments. The district representative will reach out to you just to follow up. Our next speaker is Catherine Hoges.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Hoges Brown. I'm proudly married to a Texan and a Texas transplant, but I've been, we've been in the Carrollton Farmers Branch area for the last five years. Before coming here, I'm a very, very proud alum of Teach for America. And I'm trying not to get emotional because the alleged words of Dr. Eldridge completely go against my entire life work. Completely do. I have never taught a child who looks like me. I have only taught the brown and black boys, whether stateside or internationally, where people, we have to convince the communities that they can even learn. So these words are unbelievably damaging, true or not, and I say this, and if someone ever said this about me, I would be calling myself for the external investigation to prove that I never said this. And that is my frustration because I see the words of Dr. Black, who was on the CFB Board of Trustees, talking about Dr. Eldridge when she was selected, that she brings tremendous experience and heart to the role. Our community and staff told us they wanted an educational leader who would build a trusting culture, embrace diversity, attract and retrain leaders, and of course, produce results for our students. If these words are not addressed outside of an internal, like, you can't police yourself. If they're not addressed outside of an internal investigation, how is the community supposed to trust you? How are your educators supposed to believe that you believe in them? How are students be able to believe that they can receive a transformational education in this district? And those are things that genuinely, genuinely bother me, and since I've heard these words just a few weeks ago, I, like, genuinely, I've been crying a lot and I've been sleeping because these are our kids' realities. And transformational education is a thing we can achieve in Carrollton Farmers Branch, but we need leadership that believes in our community to do so. So I ask you, what are you going to do to make the community believe in you again? Because from the educators I've talked to, the parents I've talked to, they don't. And frankly, I honestly feel like these statements, if they're not truly proven to not have existed, they're setting it up for if the district fails these students, well, this is why we have an excuse already. So I really hope you look into that because we don't trust you right now, and that's a really dangerous place to be at just the beginning of a school district.
Thank you for your comments. The district representative will contact you to follow up about your comments. At this time, we have no additional Audience for Guest comments. I will remind the audience that the board policy dictates that individuals who wish to participate during the portion of the meeting designated for public comment shall sign up with the presiding officer or designee before the meeting begins as specified in the board's procedures on public comment and shall indicate the agenda item or topic in which they wish to address the board. That is in Policy BED Local, and it will be followed. We are moving on to Agenda Item Number Four. As we transition, I do wish to make an additional comment on behalf of the Board of Trustees. We, the CFB ISD Board of Trustees, stand together, united, in the belief that Dr. Eldridge exemplifies a sincere and profound dedication to every student, parent, and staff member in this school district. She is a loving leader. As our superintendent, she has consistently demonstrated her genuine care and concern for the well-being and success of all students. As a team of eight, we continue to make a concerted effort to stay focused on the important work of serving every student in this great district. Dr. Eldridge is our superintendent, and we are excited about the great things that she is doing and will continue to do for all of our students. We ask that everyone in our community join together to work in the benefit of all children. Together, as the CFB ISD community, we will make a profound difference in the lives of all children. Thank you. Agenda Item Number Four is Non-Auction Items for Discussion, and we will start with Advanced Academics update. Ms. Carroll.
Sorry about that. No matter how much I think I prepare, I can't ever figure out technology, so. Good evening, President Hatfield, Superintendent Dr. Eldridge, and members of the board. As stated, I'm Stacy Carroll, and I assert that I did not plant Mary Level in this presentation in order to start this evening. It was pure coincidence, but she shortened some of my presentations, so I'm going to thank her for that later as well. So this evening, I'm going to be providing you with an update with Advanced Academics, specifically with the vision that we have for specifically with the vision that we have for going with our gifted and talented programming GT programming is driven by the requirements set by the State Plan of Texas for the gifted and talented. The most recent plan was adopted in 2019 and outlines accountability standards for the effectiveness of assessment and services for GT students. The state's goal is to ensure GT students demonstrate self-directed learning, thinking, research, and communication skills through district GT programs. Texas defines gifted as a student who performs at, or shows potential for performing at, a highly remarkable level of accomplishment when compared to students of the same age, experience, or environment. Additionally, the students exhibit high-performance capabilities in areas such as intellectual areas or creative and artistic areas. Students may also demonstrate an unusual capacity for leadership or an interest in a specific academic field of study. In CFB, we excel in our commitment and our gifted programming by offering a wide variety of options throughout the district for our gifted students. Examples of these include the Landry-Steem program, Perry and McCoy Leap program, a variety of programs of choice that our GT students are also available or allowed and can join in, as well as STEM, CTE, AP, and UT OnRamps programs in high school. Additionally, all campuses serve our gifted students through a model of, a GT program model called cluster grouping. Cluster grouping is a TEA-approved service model in which identified gifted students are provided curriculum with extensions and enrichment activities within the general education classroom with students of mixed abilities. Students are assigned to a classroom with a teacher who has received training as required by TEA for teaching gifted students. In the STEAM GT Gifted Academy and the LEAP program, students are taught core content with GT students only. In this, I'm sorry, STEAM students receive grade-level instruction with strategies to increase the depth of thinking and rigor within the classroom. The benefit of students that are involved in the STEAM program at Landry are that because the gap of learning is much less than in a normal mixed classroom, they're able to move through the general curriculum much quicker and they're able to use depth and complexity in order to be able to have more extensions and have more opportunities to go deeper and discuss things at a greater level or to be able to combine them in more interdisciplinary situations. And at McCoy and Perry, we have our highly gifted LEAP program and those students receive on-grade level language arts instruction with advanced but age-appropriate reading selections. They receive math at their instructional level, which is typically one to one and a half to two years in advanced of their same-aged peers. In high school, GT students receive all opportunities to branch out and to be able to really focus in on things that they have passion for or things that they're extremely curious about. They can do those, for instance, in science where, you know, they're no longer held to eighth grade science, you know, they have the opportunity to think about, do I want to do biology or physics? Do I want to do chemistry or astronomy? Do I want to join Biomed? Do I want to join Metza? So it's really the opportunity for them to really explore what they do and where their passions are at that point and be able, be able to implement that self-directed learning that we've prepared them for. All GT students in high school and in middle school are expected to be enrolled in advanced courses, at least for the area for which they are receiving services for GT. So next, we have a celebration. This is a celebration slide for us. We are continually working to make sure that we're looking at our populations of GT students and we have at, at the last snapshot, three thousand five hundred and eighty students receiving gifted services. That's about thirteen percent of our population and that's wonderful. This pie chart shows, as you can see, that right now, the, the population is broken down by demographics, thirteen percent total, but we have our greatest group of students being served are Hispanic students and our Asian students. And our program continues to grow. So we're excited to be able to work with them and we're also excited about what I consider new adventures and new knowledge as we, as we continue to recognize things that we always knew were there in the past, but we didn't necessarily, I guess, focus on them or know how to collaborate together with, about how students have multiple needs at one time. So this table depicts a number of identified GT students that receive services from multiple departments in our district. Many of our GT students, as you know, are also identified as economically disadvantaged, emergent bilingual, five oh four, excuse me, and sped. Sorry. Excuse me. Twice exceptional students or two E students refer to students that are identified as GT and also show evidence of, I'm so sorry, thank you, show evidence of one or more disabilities as defined by federal or state eligibility criteria. So that does include our dyslexia students. While Advanced Academics continues to close identification gaps, we also have been in a lot of collaboration with our special services and our multilingual services to make sure that we're really working together. We've had a couple of scenarios last year where we've really got to put into practice breaking the standards of what we would normally do in the past to serve on one side and to serve on the other and maybe hopefully make sure we've kind of met in the middle, but to actually sit down as a roundtable and say, okay, these are the services they should be receiving from us. And while these may mask the situation that you have or vice versa, we really talk about the way that we can serve our students for every need that they have and that's something that I'm really excited about in conversations that are new. Okay, so as I said, our program is growing. District-wide, we're exceeding the state expectation for identification and since May of 2021, the percentage of CFB students receiving services has increased over two percent and is maintaining a strong identification again of thirteen percent. The Advanced Academics team is continually monitoring and reviewing the effectiveness of our assessments and our identification protocols to ensure that we are equitably identifying all student populations. This year, we're implementing a new ability assessment and that assessment is called the The new Naglari test includes non-verbal, verbal, and quantitative tests that were specifically designed to be both culturally and linguistically neutral and unbiased. The testing system focuses on how a child thinks, not what they know. The NGAT was explicitly developed to address the need for equitable assessments of gifted students from diverse cultural, linguistic, and socioeconomic backgrounds so they can receive appropriate education opportunities for their abilities. This test has been shown to be one of the most effective tools in providing equity across race, diversity, ethnicity, and gender. In CFB, Advanced Academics provides ongoing opportunities for students to be recommended and screened for GT services. TEA requires all kindergarten students to be screened and identified annually and to make sure that they're receiving services by March first of the current year. Additionally, any parent, teacher, or administrator, or student as well, may recommend the student to be assessed by contacting their student's counselor on their campus. Transfer students, as they come in, if they've been identified in their previous district, they're screened upon enrollment and reassessed as needed. CFB also screens every K through twelve student twice a year at the beginning of the year and at the middle of the year for possible placement or need through, into advanced learner services and we do this through looking at their NWEA MAP growth testing. Once parent permission is obtained, both quantitative and qualitative information from multiple sources is collected to determine if a student shows evidence for a need for services. One source alone does not include or exclude a student from receiving services. We use the word preponderance of evidence to make sure that we're looking at both qualitative, which includes teacher, student, parent surveys, and work samples. And then we've got our quantitative sources, which are going to include our MAP, grades, ability testing, and those type things. And then who determines if a student receives GT services? ARE committees or Acceptance Review and Exit Committees are what we use based on TEA requirements in order to determine what students may or may not demonstrate a need for services. They are typically made up of a campus administrator, a counselor, a campus GT liaison, and a district GT specialist. As students are identified, they begin receiving services, again, from teachers who have received training to support those advanced learners. So TEA requires teachers working with gifted and talented students to receive their thirty hours of GT training before they enter the classroom or before the second semester of teaching. And to accommodate the staff, CFB has been very gracious in making sure that we can fund and offer GT Core and Update Training to our teachers online twenty-four seven so they can work on them over the holidays, they can work on them at the end of the day. They've got all the luxury to be able to take care of that year-round. So that's been something that we've been very fortunate to have. Additionally, for all of our teachers that we do bring into our district, we work very hard to make sure that the training that they've received from other areas and other school districts are comparable, that they receive credit for those as well. While all staff have access to their staff development portfolio through STRIVE, we also make sure that each campus has a designated GT specialist who works with the GT liaison on our campus to make sure that they communicate all the individual needs that the teachers have on the campuses and kind of track their training to make sure that everybody is getting what they need and know when to sign up for training as well. And then I just want to shout out the little small picture on the right. Education Foundation gave us a grant last year to be able to bring some of our teachers to the TAGT conference in Houston and it's just always amazing to have our teachers be there in person. I know it's hard to take them out of the classroom, but when they have that opportunity to be there and have those conversations with other educators and feel the same struggles they're feeling and have the same celebrations that they're having, it's really powerful as you know. I mean, I know I'm speaking to the choir on that, but I know that it's something that I love to say. Okay, as we know, our gifted students should not be receiving more. They need to be receiving something different. We've said that. That's nothing that's anything new and it means grouping and providing academically appropriate instruction and student experiences for that particular set of students. The Texas State Plan requires teachers working with GT students to possess the knowledge to develop, provide, and differentiate curricula and to modify the depth and complexity and pacing of curriculum instruction from the norm. In both cluster-grouped and GT-only core courses, CFB teachers use curriculum extensions, adapted pacing, and differentiated curricula to make sure that they adjust the content, the process, and/or the products as necessary to support children's learnings. One strategy that our district uses currently is depth and complexity. This method is derived from Professor Sandra Kaplan's extensive research into what types of knowledge distinguish experts in a field of study from those who only know surface level knowledge. CFB has provided staff development for depth and complexity for many years. This isn't anything that's new, but we're really trying to reinvigorate that post-COVID. Teachers use depth and complexity icons that prompt students to use different lenses to fully engage grade-level material before they move on to new topics. So again, we're going deeper instead of just skimming across the top and going farther. During this time, all participants from our training that we had this last, sorry, I need to start over on that. This last year, we were able to, in the fall, bring Jay Taylor with the Center of Depth and Complexity and to train our content directors, our specialists, and our coaches and get them on board with what we would be working with the teachers as well so that they would know some of the strategies that we're working with. And during that time, all the participants collaborated on integrating these strategies into the curriculum where it's seamless, so that it's not just one more thing, it's just a tool in the teacher's toolbox and if it fits for their classroom at that time, then they have it available to them. So we gave them resources. On the left-hand side, we gave them eight and a half by eleven cardstock cards that have the icons on them and they have starter ideas related to each icon. And then on the right-hand side in the little clips, they have cue cards and those cue cards offer open-ended interdisciplinary questions where teachers can focus learning, create essential questions, and engage students in meaningful conversation, again, getting the students talking in class, but having them using language of the discipline and making sure that they're really in, they're thinking about what they're saying in, in educative vocabulary and how to make connections across disciplines. So additionally, teachers were encouraged to combine these tools always with depth and complexity to make sure that we're not just asking for remembering and understanding, that we're really asking them to analyze and evaluate things, again, pushing that interdisciplinary, cross-curricular connection. And then these are my couple of shout-outs. We had a Math Monday where one of my specialists worked with Shashawn Campbell and her team of math teachers and coaches and specialists and they were using depth and complexity, so she sent us that. And then we also have, last year, we worked with our team of GT specialists, worked with Perry, we worked with the Advanced Learner English and Social Studies as well as the dual-credit social, not dual-credit, dual-language social studies teachers because we do have some of our students that are in the dual-language program and so they, they can't take the social studies advanced learner course because they've got to have that other social studies course in order to be in the dual program. So we brought in those teachers so that they could use that same depth and complexity and be able to make sure that they were increasing the rigorous students needed in their social studies courses as well, so. So shout-out to them for coming together to create exemplars for their, for their classrooms. And we're also hoping along that line to use a newsletter that I'm working on this year to introduce the parents to some of the icons in depth and complexity so that maybe they can practice with them at home or help them engage in questioning strategies for their students so that they can get beyond, what did you do today? So that if they, if they make a comment about something specifically, they can say, well, how would that affect this or how can you do this with that? And, you know, anything that can help, anything that, that we can provide for them because Advanced Academics really does care and we truly value our parents, we value the community efforts, we want to make sure that we're keeping everybody involved. And as Mary referred to earlier, we've got a lot of things going on these days. For us, we have our annual Fall Parent Meeting Sessions that provide an overview of the identification processes and the services for our students. This year, the session was offered to families via the campus and via our Parent Square in September. In each April, along with GT Awareness Week, we have our in-person parent meeting as well. And so we're looking forward to having that. Both awareness sessions, again, are offered in English and Spanish and in, I'm working on the GT Bulletin as a new constant for us as well. So all families are encouraged to become members of AGT. It is a free membership at this point, so they can come in and they can receive services through the Association of Gifted and Talented. They do the game nights, they have the special events. We've already talked about some of the other special events that they have participated or had their, their members participate in are the Kavanaugh Flight Museum Tour, they're doing a sing book study with McKinney ISD GT parents right now, they do their own book study, they're having coffee chats on Sunday, they're really, really helping step up and ramp up the support for our students so that they have outside opportunities to make sure that they're involved as well. And again, really super fast, we have slides of all the amazing things that our students are doing. You can see robotics butt-ball competitions with David Culp at Perry, you can see the State DI competition where Newman Smith team went to Kansas and took first place last year. Shout-out not only to Leon Shulock for, as Mary said, just on a dime, turning around and saying, you've got too many kids, you can't do it on your building, we'll move everything, just come on over. And then we have people like Abby Sherman who work at Sheffield and she has, has done everything she can to keep our DI program going. And so just, so many people, so many people that are doing amazing things for our kids and, and I just love it, so. I love our people. So I'll skip the part about Perro Night because Mary covered that and at this point, I will just wrap up this presentation. I want to sincerely thank you guys. I want to thank the board for supporting Advanced Academics. We continually strive for access and equity for our students in gifted identification services and programs and we just support you growing and learning with us and helping us learn to be better anytime we can be. This year, I look forward to implementing the NGAT. I really think that it's going to make a difference in revising some of our assessment practices. I want to make sure that we're enhancing parent communication. I want to make sure that we're extending opportunities for GT services for all of our students that need those services. And as most of you know, I've been in this district, I tell people all the time, I've been in this district since I was a kindergartner. My parents were in this district, they graduated from Turner, my child graduated. My child graduated from this district. I'm invested in this district. I love the people, I love the families, I love the stories, and I just really appreciate that the Board has always done what they could in order to offer an exceptional opportunity for my family, my sisters, you know, anyone that you can imagine, I just thank y'all. I mean, that's just going rogue there a little bit, but my heart celebrates when I see things that allow our children to do and be what they can be, even when they don't know what they can be, and I think that that's just really special. So I'm going to end with this thought. Very known, very well-known gifted man himself, Walt Disney, said, "Our greatest natural resource is in the minds of our children. We must not forget the minds of our brightest students and what it could mean for their future if we assume they'll just be okay, or they're smart enough to make it on their own. I'm thankful for the entire district of people who know all students deserve to be challenged and to grow into the best versions of themselves." Thank y'all for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Carol, and thank you for your service to the district. Really appreciate all that you're doing for Advanced Academics.
Thank you.
Board members, do you have any questions or comments? Ms. Garza Rojas?
I just want to say thank you for the presentation and also for all the hard work that you did. I went to the event at Creekview with my children, and it was very well-done. I had no idea it was done the way you just said. I mean, you guys did an amazing job, it was an amazing experience, and I really and truly felt like a part of the gifted and talented family. So I just want to say thank you, and thank you for your hard work, and thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you so much, and I just have to say, it was all AGT. I just, I support them, and they do a wonderful job as well. Sorry, we're going to fight about this one, so, okay, sorry.
Mr. Shakman?
Ms. Carol, thank you so much for that. Our students have been a part of that program, and it continues to grow and do well. Do you have any sense that with the new NGAT and some of the other procedures, that we will continue to see trend lines increase for the number of students in gifted?
I believe so. I believe the NGAT, the way that it's set up, even the directions are done with non-verbal. I mean, they're done with cartoons and with figures and things that have nothing to do with language. So I really think that it's going to continue to tap into just another opportunity for us to find students in a different way. Again, you know, we're always trying, and this opportunity presented itself, and I'm really excited to say that I believe that it will meet the population that we have been missing some of, yes.
Ms. Derek?
Ms. Carol, I want to thank you for the presentation and just build off of that real quick. I appreciate that y'all were willing to go past status quo and recognize that maybe the identification that we've been using could be better and look for a different program that we could use to identify these students. So well done to your team for looking for something to make us even better in early identification of these students.
Thank you.
Additional comments?
I'll just add one thing that the, I believe it was slide number five, where you looked at the GT and all the other categories. I really appreciate the cross-collaboration across departments. I think that working in silos is something, a barrier that we have to break down, and it's just really important that we continue to cross-collaborate so that we can serve students that are across multiple categories. So thank you very much for the efforts on that.
All right, thank you very much for your presentation. With that, our next agenda item is 4B, a construction update. Mr. Blackburn?
Good evening, President Hatfield, Dr. Eldridge, members of the Board. This evening, I've just got a quick update on the progress of the 2018 bond, so I'm going to walk my way through here. Just as a overall high-level view, we did a lot of different facility improvements, a lot of safety and security upgrades, and a lot of technology infrastructure. Also, before I forget, you do have a handout in front of you to go along with this. We did make a few scope adjustments as we met with the Bond Oversight Committee. One was seeing a little bit of scope at the auditorium and adding a little bit of budget to install the precast visitor bleachers per guidance that we received from the Bond Oversight Committee. At Central, Farmers Branch, and Carrollton Elementary Schools, we did reduce scope to security and critical items only as these campuses were slated for replacement during the bond planning for 2023. Same, pretty much the same thing for Salazar and Grimes, scope that was there was eliminated since those campuses were slated for replacement. And then the last item is at Rosemead, McCoy, and Ferno, scope to provide permanent doors and partitions was not completed, and we do, I would like to recommend that the Board consider partial funds transfer to include in the 2023 campus scopes of work for those campuses. I had the opportunity to visit with the three principals at those campuses today, walk those sites, and it is something I do feel like we should strongly consider. Final touches for the 2018 bond, we are finishing up safety and security upgrades. We had a lot of supply chain issues with some electronic boards for the various systems. Those came in, and those are being, we're working through all of those, and we're making good progress there. We are working through getting the City of Dallas to sign off on our generator at Sheffield Elementary. Anytime you install a new storm shelter, you either have to have a battery backup system or a generator backup system, and when you have a generator, there are a lot of requirements from the City of Dallas especially to get that signed off, so just one small piece there. We're finishing up the work on the HVAC controls. Just to be clear, we do have functioning air conditioning at all of our campuses, but being able to control it remotely is what we're finishing up on. And then all of this work should be complete by the end of December, based on our current progress. And then lastly, as I was considering a good way to efficiently give you an update on all the work that was done, I felt like the best way to do that was probably going to be to just show you a video that had been done that I felt was really well-done. So let me see if I can bring that up for you.
What I want our community to know is that the dollars spent on the 2018 bond were in our schools, for our kids, setting us up for future success. Promises made, promises kept.
Many renovations have come to Turner High School. We saw new facilities for our cosmetology, our welding, our VetMed, in addition to Autotech, automotive. We have seen an increase in enrollment of students who used to go to school outside of the Carrollton Farmers Branch School District. They are wanting to come to CFB ISD because we have these facilities.
The Chirring Medicine went from just four walls, one classroom in the main building. We now have a huge lab with kennels, surgical suite, and grooming facilities, and that allows our students to actually feel like they are participating in the workforce.
It doesn't feel like a school whenever you're out there, it's just like, kind of like walking down, like, almost like a little shopping center. I mean, you have floral, you have VetMed, you have Autotech and Cosmetology. The updated salon gives us a feel for the real world.
We also got upgrades in our safety and security. We got a new vestibule, we got new keycard bob readers. When kids come in, when parents come in, we know we've done everything we can do to keep our kids safe.
The interiors look amazing. I'm really excited. And I met with my social studies teacher, and she was really nice.
I think that the auditorium looks really nice, and I think it'd be fun, like, if I wanted to do a play, which I might do.
I'm going to use the furniture in the hallways a lot because I like to sit, and I don't like to stand.
It's fun, you can, like, hang out here for a little bit, you know, like, before school, after school, just wait for a little bit. It's a cool hangout area for kids, I really like the addition of it.
Let's rally for the EOCs, hey, hey! Let's rally for the EOCs, hey, hey!
If you walk into this school, it does not even look like the same building as it was before. Sometimes I even catch myself walking in in the mornings, and I'm like, "Is this even the same school?"
This building was built in the 1960s. It feels like we have springed into the future. It's modern, it's open, and it's really just a building that our teachers and students deserve.
Our students, I mean, the second they saw this building, their eyes have been wide open, and they're very appreciative for it, and you can tell they're really enjoying the space.
We have windows, we have collaborative spaces for our kids, it meets the technology needs that we need, and the building makes more sense.
My favorite space is the library, I've kind of just always loved to read. The windows make everything just feel bigger. There's fun seats, there's tables, which is nice, and there's like tons of books that you can always check out. I know I have like three at home that I'm still working on.
Along with the renovation, the safety and security has really increased. We have a secure vestibule that our front office clerks are able to use a button to have people come in and out securely. In a worst-case scenario, this place could get locked down within two seconds.
I think our school is special because they do the best they can to set us up for success, whether it's through the programs, through clubs, through school teams, they want to see us succeed.
On behalf of the parents, the students, the staff of RL Turner High School, I thank you.
Words can't explain the gratitude that this staff has and these students have.
I'm just incredibly grateful to serve in CFB ISD and have community members that make our students' education a priority and make the buildings in which those children are educated a priority.
The investment will set us up for success, not only our students, but our community as a whole, for many years to come.
That is why I love my job. So, y'all have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Blackburn. Board members, any questions or comments? All right, thank you for the update on the 2018 bond. Our next item is item 4C, the attendance update. Dr. Hamlin?
Dr. Eldridge, Ms. Hatfield, and members of the Board. As you know, September kicked off our attendance awareness campaign this year, and I want to take just a few seconds to thank several departments, our Student Services, our Communications Department, Technology Department, our Educational Foundation, and then all of our campuses that really came together to make sure that everyone understands that student attendance daily is extremely important. We know how important it is for us to be able to offer an equitable and inclusive learning experience on a daily basis. That can't happen unless our students are in the classroom. Now, the attendance awareness campaign, as you've seen many of these things, we wanted to make sure that all of our students, no matter what grade they're in, whatever level, elementary, middle, and high, every corner they turn, they had an opportunity to make a connection to the fun they're having in the classroom, in the hallways, the cafeteria, to being at school, because every minute counts. All of our students receive bookmarks. Our kid, our elementary kids have the stickers, you know they love the stickers. They put stickers on their arms, on their shoes, everywhere they're not supposed to, all their folders, so they really enjoy the stickers. And then every campus, elementary to high school, have the posters in all of the high traffic areas, cafeteria, hallways, and classrooms, just celebrating and reminding them why they're there, because every minute counts. Our, big shout-out to our district's social media. You know, they really had a strong presence throughout the month of September on everything that we're doing and making that connection with every minute counts and attendance during the attendance awareness month. But we also want to make sure that we're doing this throughout the school year as well, because what we have learned is, we don't want to have this big push and a die-off because we've got to have a steady attendance throughout the entire year. Because what we've seen historically is, whatever our attendance rate is in August, it typically drops anywhere from 1% to 2% throughout the year, and we don't want that to happen. Not to be outdone, is our campus social media. I really enjoy this page here, just because you can see, these are examples of elementary, middle, and high school. Our kids are engaged, they're having fun, they're celebrating being at school. Our teachers, and I know many of you have seen Lauren Mar, she's like Twitter famous, but she is all of, all of our teachers are making sure our kids make that connection and having fun in the classroom, and they're celebrating the kids being there, and they're actually creating lessons that support every minute counts. Now, this is really where it hits home for me, is attendance matters. And this slide here is going to show us the past two years, '21, '22, and '22, '23, regarding how attendance daily, being at school all the time, can have a great impact on academic achievement. This slide represents end-of-course exams, 8th grade through 12th grade. As you can see in the gray box, that represents all the tests taken, all of our EOC tests taken in '21, '22, and the results of the students being able to meet grade level or above, not approaches. This is grade level or above. Only 12% of our chronically absent students were able to meet grade level or above. Total tests taken. That includes all five of our EOCs. Compared to students that are there regularly, they're there 91% of the time or more, 29% of all tests taken received the mark of meets grade level or above. If we move to last year, the '22, '23 school year, you see a larger gap between the two groups. So all the tests taken, EOCs, last year, only 7% of those tests were at meets grade level or above, compared to 32% of all tests taken by regular attenders, those that are there 91% of the time or more, were able to meet grade level or above. That hurts. That shows we have some concerns for our kids that are not in school, and that's why we have to be very proactive in making sure we do everything we can to get them in school. Here's another impact regarding average daily attendance. This is a five-year comparison. You can see in 2018, '19, before COVID, our average daily attendance was 95%. You move to the next year, 2019, '20, slight increase at 92.2%, I'm kind of shocked about the COVID year because that was hold harmless, and we were supposed to get credit for basically everybody, but we only had 97.1% of the kids attending class while they're at home. And then you see that what I consider a significant drop in '21, '22, 90.9% of our kids attended school daily. And then you move on to last year, 92.7%, which really gave us our baseline on the things that we're trying to do in the future. And our goal this year, for the '23, '24 school year, is to increase our daily attendance by 1%. If we do that, that's going to give us an opportunity to bring in additional ADA revenue of about $1.5 million, based on our student enrollment. Now, if you look at last year's number, 92.7%, which means 7.3% of our kids were absent every single day. That number right there equates to a little bit over $11 million that we missed out on for possible revenue tied to ADA, which has a direct impact on the types of resources we can provide our students on a daily basis. So we really have on a daily basis. So, we really have to have a laser-like focus on making sure our kids are in school. And as you know, we have standardized attendance time across the district for elementary and middle school students at 10:00 a.m. High school's a little different, because they're on block schedule, so the block schedule doesn't allow us to take that attendance time, because they're in the hallways. So, this gives us an opportunity to get them at 10:15. This information has been shared, not only through Parent Square, it's on the district attendance webpage, it's on every campus's webpage, and it's on page 45 of the student handbook. Here are some things that we do at the campus level to make sure that we can help reconcile attendance. Every campus has an attendance clerk that works with not only our teachers and our administrators, but our families, to making sure that we get our students in school. When they're out, that's the connection that we make with our parents. We have an attendance officer, a Ms. Chalé Brown, who works directly with all of our attendance clerks, to make sure that they have the resources they need to reach out to our families. And at times, if we ever need to, when we have truancy issues and concerns, she's the one who facilitates that process with our court system. We have what we call campus-based intervention meetings, as well as the high school grad team meetings for our seniors. During these meetings, we not only talk about student academics and behavior concerns, we talk about attendance. And when we have these conversations, it allows student services to pair up and partner with our campuses, our administrators, and our counselors, to be able to go do home visits for students that we know are not showing up to school as often as they should. And that's crucial. Our campuses are always wanting to go do those home visits. Sometimes they go on their own, sometimes they ask to partner with student services and our counseling departments as well. We also have our FEA local policy that supports how we handle compulsory attendance, and what we want to be able to do, and what we really haven't done in the past, is if students are absent 10 consecutive days and we cannot find them, we have done everything we can at the campus level and through our attendance officer, there are steps we can take to mitigate the ADA. We don't like to do that, but it's therefore stored local policy. What I'm really excited to talk a little bit about is something brand new, is going to be our district attendance plan. This plan is really going to be able to allow us to embed it within our district improvement plan, as well as an opportunity for us to work with our campuses, to put this in the campus improvement plan as well, based on their actual attendance data. As you can see, what we've done in the attendance plan, we've identified four groups that we've targeted regarding attendance. We have the exceptional attenders. Those are any student that attends school 90% of the time, 95% of the time or more. Based on last year's enrollment, that was about 11,000 students. 47% of our kids last year were in school 95% of the time or more. Then we have our regular attenders. Those are students that were here 91% to 94% of the time, which is about 27%, which equaled about 6,900 students, based on last year's enrollment. Obviously, the ones in red are the ones we're really concerned about. We have chronic absenteeism. Those are students that are absent 10% to 19% of the time. That equaled about 15%, 3,900 students. And then our severe chronic, students that are missing school 20% of the time or more. That's huge. Those are serious, serious concerns. If you just take those bottom two together, that's 25% of our students are missing a minimum of 18 days a year. But we have a plan. We have five core action steps that we will be taking with our campuses, based on how we're monitoring attendance data at the district level, as well as the campus level, how we are engaging our students and families. We have just finished creating a new document that is going to be online for our parents, so they can actually, it's an absence reporting form, that they can actually go in, put in their student's name, campus, student ID, why they're out, when they're going to be out, when they're coming back, and submit, and it goes, it'll go directly to the attendance clerk for that child. So, it really helps us reconcile those absences. We also are going to be recognizing good and improved attendance for our kids. It's important that we recognize the kids that are there every day, because a lot of times we don't, and through awards assemblies, through the announcements, and making personal phone calls home. We also want to make sure that we have systems and routines for our campuses to provide personalized outreach. We have the robocall that everybody gets and through Parent Square, but we want to be making sure that our attendance clerks and our staff are reaching out with personal phone calls. We've got to build that connection with our families, we've got to make sure that they get those questions. How are you? Is there something we can help you with? Tell us how we can support you. How can we get your child to school? We've got to make those connections in order for it to really, really be impactful. And then remove barriers. This one's a key, a key step for us. When we see an issue, we have to be able to make a change. When you remove barriers such as, we want to make sure our parents understand that, hey, we have a breakfast program. Get it, bring your kids early. We're going to feed your kids, we're going to take care of them all day. We want to be able to offer parent education nights for mental health, for transportation, for vaccinations, for homelessness. Those are barriers. For drug use, the things that we're seeing across the nation, those are all barriers. Those are all things that can keep kids from coming to school. We're going to work hard with our campuses, our community, to make sure that we identify those barriers and we get our kids in school, because that's why we're here. We've got to do everything possible, and we're really excited about having this plan moving forward. Worked with some principals on this plan as well, and our attendance officer. We're going to be presenting this plan here in the upcoming weeks to our, the rest of our principals, just to show them and see exactly how this is very easily to be embedded, not only in our district improvement plan, but the campus improvement plan. And that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hamlin. Board members, questions or comments? Ms. Derrick?
Thank you, Dr. Hamlin. I appreciate the presentation. So, the number, I'm just, I'm shook by this.
I forgot to say that we weren't going to have questions today.
Well, it's really not even a question, this is comment. 25% of our students are missing at least 18 days a school year.
Last year, yes, ma'am.
If we let that sink in for a second, 25%, it's thousands of students, 18 days. My child is sick one day and is scrambling to catch up. These kids are so far behind, and then we wonder, you know, why do we see pockets of areas of kids struggling, and why don't we have growth in certain areas? And these are probably the kids that are really struggling, and we have got to help them. I mean, I just, the number is, you said that 25%, and I'm doing the math in my head, and I'm like, this is a ton of kids. I am proud of the work that we are doing around identifying this as a problem. We're not hiding from it. We're saying, we recognize, like, this is a problem, and we have to fix this, because we need children in school to learn. And when they are not in school, not only are they not learning, they're getting behind, which means when they show back up, you can't just pick right back up. They're having to try to catch up on what they missed, plus try to learn what they're supposed to be learning for today, and, I mean, that's a hard, hard thing to do for kids. So, I'm really excited. I'm obviously like very passionate about this. I also think that this should be a community-wide effort. I mean, we should be shouting from the rooftops that we need everybody's help to get our kids in school. If neighbors are noticing their kids, neighbor kids aren't getting to school, help them get to school. We should be at our city council meetings telling our community, we need our kids in school. Because the money's nice, like, don't get me wrong, but it's the learning that these kids are not getting, and 25% of our kids, I mean, I guarantee you, if you looked at this, that number, those kids and their learning, there's no way those kids are caught up. There's just no way. I couldn't miss 18 days of work and be able to catch up. I mean, I would feel so lost. So, I'll stop.
No.
Thank you.
And thank you for saying that, because it is, it is going to take the village, it's going to take all of us, it's going to take our community, and we are going to use this plan to really help campuses identify our students, especially in that chronic and severe chronic category, and make sure that we eliminate the barriers. Because there are things we can do, and we are going to do everything we can to eliminate the barriers. We want our kids with us every single day.
Thank you. Board members, additional comments? Mr. Brochek?
Thank you for the information and the data. You know, I like data, but, and my questions were similar to Ms. Derrick's about, you know, yes, the academic success is why we want our students in, but, you know, is there going to be, I mean, our teachers have a lot on their plate, everybody has a lot on their plate. So, you know, is there a plan to help support our campuses to help these students get caught back up? If a plan's not, I just want it to be considered, because it's going to take, to your point, a lot.
Absolutely. These four, these five core actions, they will have very, very explicit, specific procedures in all these categories, from monitoring to doing the outreach and to supporting our teachers. And this means additional interventions, absolutely, we're going to be, we're going to be turning over every rock to make sure, like I said, we're removing these barriers.
Okay. And the communication to our attendance clerks and training, I'd hope they'll, just so they know how to receive questions from our parents, and then what's the communication to our parents on notifying them of the new form and the new process and how it works?
Yes, and we're in the process of really revamping our, what I call a playbook for our attendance clerks.
Okay.
That'll include scripts, questions to ask, like I mentioned a little bit earlier, you know, how we can help, you know, tell us what the concerns are, why is your kid not here? So, absolutely, we're going to have very specific scripts and what I like to call a playbook for them to get to and reference quickly as possible, because a lot of times, there, it's a full-time job for, especially at the secondary level, for these attendance clerks, but we want to make sure that they have everything at their disposal, including the support from student services, our technology department, and just all of us across the district. So, we'll have something in place.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Spanaevitas?
Thank you. And talking about playbook, at halftime, Smith was winning 55 to zero. It came across my board here. But I wanted to say, in visiting the campuses, how great it is, because everyone has jumped on the bandwagon. I mean, we are celebrating kids, we're having parties, all the scores are throughout the walls, and everybody has the opportunity to see that, and it's almost a competition. We want to get to school, we want to win that popcorn party or whatever they have going on. I know, that's what Central's going to do. I visited Sheffield, and that's a huge campus, and there was only 10 tardies. And I'm talking 32nd tardies, not, you know, 45 minutes. Dan Long, too, I think I experienced five, which is great. I mean, so, you know, the word is getting out, people are taking it seriously, and it's like a whole movement across our district, and I just want to thank you, because it's so important to support, set them up, not just our kids for success, but our staff, you know, our administration, because once we're all together, one big family, you know, we really do start acting like that. Thank you.
Thank you. And we definitely want to make sure that this is not just a one-month campaign. We're going to be doing this, something every single month, month, based on attendance and our enrollment. So, you'll hear a lot of information coming out every month, probably.
Thank you. That's awesome.
Any additional comments?
So, I just want to add on to and echo my fellow board members. At our retreat this weekend, we, as a team of eight, focused on this. This is a priority of this board, that we expect for us to do everything in our power to get kids in school. You know, I spent some time studying and looking at some research evidence that shows that depression, anxiety, and substance abuse are associated to absences, and we have to have our kids in school, learning every day and being a part of our family, so that we can also reduce the mental health crisis that we have. So, I just want to say thank you for the intentionality and effort that is being put into this. I'm excited to see what we continue to do together as a community. And I also want to ensure that, you know, as the district is looking to work on these five core actions, and you mentioned that you have a principal groups that have, a group that has helped you, and then you're rolling this out to the principals, how are we going to involve the principals in the playbook and the day-to-day decisions? Because they are the ones that are also impacted by the decisions made at the district level.
So, every campus has an administrator that's kind of attached to the attendance clerk, so they'll be part of that training as well.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Ham, or Dr. Hamlin.
Thank you.
I appreciate the presentation, and we look forward to hearing continuous updates on how we're going to make Every Minute Count.
It's going to happen. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so, next, we're going to move to the consent agenda, and that is number five. So, the consent agenda is a mechanism that the board uses to approve a number of routine items together with a single vote. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the public notice for this meeting includes the list of all consent agenda items, and the board has been provided ample information about these items in advance. Prior to any action taken on the consent agenda, board members may request withdrawal of individual items for clarification or discussion. Board members, I'll remind you that the administration mentioned 5K be pulled, could be pulled from the consent agenda. So, board members, are there any items that you wish to remove from the consent agenda? Ms. Brochek?
Do you need me to officially pull that from the consent agenda?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So, I'd like to pull item 5K from the consent agenda.
Thank you.
No problem.
All right. So, if there are no other items to be removed, do I have a motion regarding the consent agenda as amended? Ms. Derrick?
I move that we approve the amended consent agenda.
All right. And I have a second from Ms. Garza Rojas. Is there any discussion? All of those in favor, raise your hand. All of those opposed? With a vote of six in favor and zero opposed, the motion carries. So, the next item on our agenda is item number six, items for discussion and/or action. A is items removed from consent. Our item removed from consent is the purchase of ballistic window film. Do I have a motion regarding this? Having no motion, let the record show that no action was taken on item 5K ballistic window film. At this time, it has been tabled pending additional review by administration. Our next item is 6B, consider and approve all matters related to the nomination of candidates for the Denton Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. Board members, you were provided information in board book about the nomination process for candidates to the Denton Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. Does anyone have any questions or comments? All right. This item is marked for possible action. Does the board wish to take any action? Okay, for the record, let it show that item 6B, titled "All Matters Related to Nomination of Candidates for Denton County Denton Central Appraisal District Board of Directors", has no action taken. Our next item will be 6C. Consider and approve all matters related to the nomination of candidates for the Dallas Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. For this item, you were also provided information in board book about the nomination process for the Dallas Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, this item is also marked for possible action. Does the board wish to take any action? For the record, let it show that item 6C, titled "All Matters Related to the Nomination of Candidates for the Dallas Central Appraisal District Board of Directors", has no action taken. Moving on to item 6D, consider and approve approval of a resolution, resolution on funding. So, as we're all aware, the 88th legislative session, there was business related to public education that did not make it through the process. And just today, the governor has released his official call for the third special session to begin on October 9th, which does relate to vouchers or whatever you want to call it, savings accounts and some other matters. But I think it's important that we consider standing up for the needs of CFB ISD. So, in front of you, you have a resolution, which you were provided earlier this week. So, the intent with this is that the board could take action to show our community, our house reps and our senators, what the board collective believes is in the best interest of CFB ISD. So, with that, board members, do you have any questions or comments about the resolution? This item is marked for possible action. Does the board wish to take action? And I will remind you that the resolution that is at your seat will need to be read aloud if the motion is made. Ms. Derrick?
I move that we approve the motion. Do you want me to read it now?
Mm-hmm.
Resolution of the Board of Trustees- Resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District Regarding School Funding, Whereas the State of Texas Has a Historic $33 Billion Surplus, And Whereas It Is Constitutionally Mandated for the State of Texas to Provide for an Efficient System of Free and Public Schools, And Whereas Texas Public School Districts Accept Every Student and Are Mandated to Follow State Academic Standards Plus Financial Accountability, And Whereas the Texas Legislature Has Not Made Any Adjustments to the Basic Allotment Since 2019, And Whereas Local School Districts Are Facing Historic Levels of Inflation Since the COVID-19 Pandemic, And Would Need a $1,200 Increase in the Basic Allotment to Address Inflation Costs, And Whereas Local School Districts Are Contending with a Statewide and Nationwide Teacher Shortage, Demanding Competitive Compensation for Educators, And Whereas House Bill 3 Enacted During the 88th Legislative Session Mandates the Addition of an Armed Personnel on All Campuses Without the Requisite Funding Needed for Local School Districts to Implement the Provisions of This Legislation, And Whereas Per-Pupil Spending in Texas Shall Not Include the INS and Tristan-Sinking Funding, As These Funds Are Derived from Bond Approvals by Local Voters and Cannot Be Allocated for Everyday M&amp;O Maintenance and Operations Expenses That Are Directly Impacted by Inflation, And Now Therefore it Be Resolved That, In the Event of a Legislative Special Session Concerning Public Education or Educational Choice and Educational Savings Accounts Vouchers, The Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees Firmly Advocates for Legislative Support to Enhance the Basic Allotment and Rectify the Unfunded Mandates Imposed on Texas Public Schools. This Stance Opposes the Redirection of Taxpayer Funds to Private Entities Not Bound by the Texas Education Code, With the Primary Goal of Upholding Transparency and Accountability Within Our Education System.
I have a motion for Ms. Derek. Do I have a second? Ms. Brochek, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? By a vote of six in favor and zero opposed, the resolution carries. For the record, let it show, oh, nevermind, sorry. Our next item is Agenda Item Number Seven, Comments From Board Members Regarding Posted Agenda Items. Board members, do you have any comments you wish to make at this time related to our posted agenda? Ladies and gentlemen, we have reached the end of our agenda, and we are adjourned at 8:52 p.m.